The views, information, and opinions expressed during the following program are solely those of the individuals involved and do not necessarily represent the views of Access Communications, its representatives, or its employees.
Well, good evening, everyone, and we'll call the meeting to order on this 25th of September 2023. Boy, that time is flying. We'd like to welcome our esteemed guests from SPC, Rupen, President, and would you mind just quickly introducing the rest of your people?
Well, good evening, Mayor Ludwig and Council, and yes, thank you very much, Rupen Pandiam, President, Chief Executive Officer of SAS Power, and I want to thank you for the invitation to be speaking in front of you this evening. I've joined to my left by Corey Hayko, who's the Chief Operating Officer with SAS Power, and I have a number of other SAS Power officials around the room, and maybe we could ask them to introduce themselves if there's an opportunity for them to attest to the council.
Yeah, absolutely. Why don't we do that, starting behind you guys, behind Rupen? Just stand up, introduce yourselves, please.
Go ahead, you guys, please go ahead.
Greg Millbrandt, Director of Bowner Down Power Station, new carbon capture.
Lads Locking, Director, Chan Power Station.
Go ahead.
Steve Sharp, Corporate Sustainability Specialist.
I'm Leanne Persky, Corporate Sustainability.
Scott Wallen, Production Manager at Bowner Down.
Awesome. I know everybody has to know their pecky order, so don't start out a turd, right? Or you'll get penalized after the meeting. But thank all of you for coming tonight, and we're very happy to have our SBC friends here. And Rupen, did you want to take it away?
Yeah, thank you very much, Your Worship. So, again, you know, as I was saying, it's a pleasure to be here. The Estevan community and surrounding regions are a very important part of the SAS Power story for the last 51 years or more here in the province of Saskatchewan. And, you know, I am struck, as I transitioned into this new role, just how much of a family SAS Power is. And, so, you know, almost everything we do, we talk about ourselves as a family, and certainly all the workers who work in SAS Power facilities here in Estevan, but certainly across southern Saskatchewan are very much a part of our families, and we think often about all of those folks, and, you know, and their contributions to this community and their commitment to this community, I think, is something that you've spoken to me about, Your Worship, and so, you know, happy today to come here and just share work on where we're going and maybe answer some of your questions on that front. You know, just speaking of family, and just to share a little bit more about me and my background, you know, I'm on the job now 14 months, and prior to that, I was working in executive government in Saskatchewan for over 25 years, and most recently as Deputy Minister of Finance, and before that, I was the CEO of a major infrastructure agency here in Saskatchewan. And, so, that's how I find my way into the power business. But, you know, speaking of family, the way I found my way into Canada was because my dad's sister, his husband, was a science teacher, and he came to Canada as a science teacher to teach in rural Saskatchewan. In fact, he was teaching in Latmon, Saskatchewan. And so, they got here in the summertime and said, "You guys should come, because it's super nice." And certainly, we landed in Manitoba in a blizzard, and that certainly, they ended up making Saskatchewan home and making Regina home. But almost every summer, from the time I was about, you know, six or seven years old, until well after I graduated high school, I would spend in Latmon, Saskatchewan. And so, you know, I know well the rivalry between Latmon and Beam Fate. I remember coming to Estevan as a young man, just, you know, going shopping and hanging out and contributing to the community and not getting in trouble. Anyway, so it's a bit of a homecoming to me, too. So, I'm really pleased to be here this evening, and I think I heard, and I don't know if this is true, but I heard it might be your birthday as well. Is that a true story?
Yes, actually, I've been trying to keep that low-key, but thank you. Once you get past, you know, my age, you'd rather not have the birthdays, but appreciate that. Thank you.
Well, best wishes on the year ahead for you. So, again, very, very pleased to be here on behalf of SAS Power, and, you know, I know, and maybe I don't know who's advancing this slide, so thank you very much. Appreciate that. So, you know, I'd like to acknowledge and thank everyone in the Estevan community and in surrounding R M for your friendship and support over the last 50 years. And we recognize that we have a strong history of collaborating to accomplish the goals to benefit, to the benefit of both SAS Power and the Estevan region. For that, I sincerely want to thank you. And you can see a whole series of the initiatives that we've been involved in in the community over the years, and certainly, you know, this is just a small sampling of our involvement in the community and things that we are very proud of accomplishing together with your council, Your Worship. Maybe next slide. You may be the most informed council in all of Saskatchewan with respect to the power system, but let me, if you will, just walk a little bit through what our power system looks like and maybe some of the challenges that I see that lie ahead for us, and then I'd like to think about what the opportunities for us as a corporation are, but certainly you as a community, and again, our family at SAS Power here in Estevan and surrounding regions. So, our current capacity in the province is about 5,400 megawatts of generating capacity. About 65% of that, if you're taking a look at the slides ahead of you, is thermal fossil fuel emitting. You know, we have coal and natural gas making up the bulk of the power generation system in the province of Saskatchewan. About 21% of our current generation is hydro, about 11% wind. And those are all big numbers, for sure, but, you know, the important thing is that even though 65% of our current capacity is thermal fossil fuel, almost 80% of the energy consumed in this province is from thermal fossil fuel. So, that just tells you how important it is with respect to our current mix. We were on track prior to the introduction of Clean Electricity Regulations that have been recently gazetted by the federal government to achieve a 50% reduction in greenhouse gas emissions with respect to our generating capacity here in Saskatchewan by 2030, and to ultimately achieve zero greenhouse gas emissions from our current generating facilities by 2050. And, and we'll continue to push down that path. As part of the equivalency agreement that we signed with the federal government in 2014 around the end of coal, we made a commitment to introduce 50% renewables into the provincial grid by 2030. And so, we're on track to do so. We'll introduce 2,000 megawatts of renewables by 2030 and likely 3,000 by 2035. And why that's important is that, you know, we continue to move down that path with respect to the commitments we've made. You'll recall that the equivalency agreement allowed us to continue to operate our coal generators past end of life out to 2030, and as part of that commitment, we've made a commitment to introduce the 50% renewables integration by 2030. So, we were on, we were on a path, and as I said, the Clean Electricity Regulations have recently -- please advance the slide. Thanks a lot, Jeff. So, you know, we were on track with respect to the previous regulatory framework, and we, you know, and I think we had ambitious targets with respect to the 50% reduction in GHG emissions by 2030, and certainly net zero by 2050 or earlier. But the federal government has, in fact, released new regulations called the Clean Electricity Regulations, and they require our utility to achieve zero GHG emissions by 2035. So, advancing our plan by a full 15 years and giving us really about 12 years to achieve the objective. And just to frame that for you, you know, it took 93 years for us to build the current system that we have in operation province-wide, and, you know, we're being asked to transition that in just 12 years. And so, you know, in terms, just practically speaking, in terms of the amount of work that we have to do as a utility to receive, you know, to achieve a zero emission power system, it is the longest pathway of almost any jurisdiction in Canada. And for us, that presents a lot of problems. You know, not only do we have to think about replacing a good bulk of our current electricity system, but to achieve that in 12 years is, and I've said this publicly, is technically, logistically, and financially not possible for us as a corporation. And just to be clear, we're fully committed to removing greenhouse gases from our generation as fast as possible, but to achieve it in the timelines that are currently laid out is not possible for us as a corporation. So, we continue to work with the federal government even prior to the release of the Clean Electricity Regulations. You know, I had opportunity to be in Ottawa to share exactly the story, which is that, you know, the distance that Saskatchewan requires to cover to achieve the objective is longer and further than most jurisdictions in Canada, and that we would need significant help and/or latitude with respect to timing. And so, we'll just stay on this slide, Jeff, for a moment. So, we have a very unique operating environment, and, you know, and almost all across the country, as power systems were being built, you know, over 100 years ago, they were being built based on the resources that were available. And certainly, here in southeastern Saskatchewan, there is an abundance of coal, and we built coal generation. In Manitoba, there was abundance of hydro, and they built hydro. In British Columbia, they built hydro. And so, you've seen the difference in power systems across the country. And, so, that is, you know, has shaped our power system and has led to the current, you know, the challenges that we have with respect to having to mitigate some 65% of the current capacity that is emitting in our province. You know, beyond that, we also have one of the largest per capita grids in North America. So, we have 160,000 kilometers of transmission and distribution lines here in Saskatchewan. And, you know, just to frame that, that's enough to go around the world at least four times, or almost four times, I should say. And more importantly, what that means is that we have some of the lowest densities per circuit kilometer of any electrical utility in North America. So, we have about 2.6 customers per each circuit kilometer. Why that's important is that anything we do to change anything in our power system will cost more than it costs Alberta, or Manitoba, or Piggigier's district. And so, that is important for us as a utility, certainly important to our ratepayers and to people of the province. And just wanted to frame some of that for you. And that will have impacts for us as a jurisdiction. On the financial front, you know, my, you know, my sincere belief is that, you know, that the energy transition that's underway will not be able to be facilitated just by ratepayers in this province, that we'll need, you know, significant federal support to allow us to achieve the outcome of removing greenhouse gases from our generating capacity. Thank you. I think there's one more slide, if you could. Thanks. So, as I said earlier, we're moving as fast as we can to modernize our grid while also providing reliable, sustainable, cost-effective power for Saskatchewan people and businesses. And instead of 2035, the net zero by 2050 timeline allows us the time to develop zero emission baseload technologies that Saskatchewan needs to transition its power system. But it's important to note that the existing federal regulations still require the retirement of conventional coal generation by 2030. That is under the reduction of carbon dioxide from coal-fired generation of electricity regulations, which are different than the proposed Clean Electricity Regulations. And unless federal regulations change, SAS Power must continue to plan for that timeline. And that generation will need to be replaced by lower non-emitting sources. And while some of, some other provinces can rely on low-emitting baseload energy from hydro power, much of what was built decades ago, there aren't many hydro development options left here in Saskatchewan. We think we can harvest another 300 or 360 megawatts of hydro power province-wide. There's long lead times, about 12 to 15 years, to develop large hydro. And, so, that's just some of the challenges we're facing on that front. We are looking forward to developing new solutions, like expanding nuclear power from small modular reactors, looking at hydrogen energy storage solutions and more. And we're actively pursuing all of those, and I suspect you might have some questions on those that we can talk about as we, as we get to the end of the presentation. On top of replacing our GHG emitting Generation, there's also logistical and financial challenges of building new transmission lines, modernizing our transmission and distribution system, which is one of the largest in Canada, as I noted, and maintaining the generation, transmission, and distribution systems while we're doing all of that work. So, we're facing shifting expectations from our customers, large and small. Almost 68% of the load in the province is industrial load. So, I'll say that again, almost 68% of the load is industrial load. And that means our largest industrial customers are, you know, our largest consumers of power, and those are exactly the same companies that are asking us as a company to go faster with respect to removing carbon from our electric generation. And so, they're actively, you know, working with us, but certainly with the federal government and other partners to look at options in terms of what will allow them to meet their ESG requirements, because many of those companies are large publicly traded companies and are seeking the economic benefit of moving quickly as well. So, we face challenges even inside the province with respect to moving quickly, I'm the question. Next slide, please. So, I've already shared with you why net zero 2035 isn't feasible for Saskatchewan, and there's several factors to consider. And again, like I said, we're doing a more detailed assessment of the detailed regulations, which were just released. We have till November 2nd to provide that input back to the federal government, along with all the other utilities in Canada, and we'll do so. And I think you'll hear more about that as we have a more refined view of exactly what those technical requirements are and our ability to achieve that. But just, you know, at a broad brushstroke level, you know, the technologies available for us to achieve a net zero transmission grid are simply commercially not available. So, even though we're talking about SMRs, no one is operating an SMR that we can use as a model. Even though we're talking about carbon capture and natural gas, no one's operating carbon capture or natural gas that we can adopt as a commercially available technology. And so, we're challenged because of commercial availability of technology. And as I said earlier, you know, building these new generation facilities will also require a significant amount of time. You know, post-COVID in 2019, we've seen supply chain disruptions globally, but certainly in the power sector, this has become an acute issue, especially as the American government has introduced the Inflation Reduction Act, which had a series of incentives for American power producers to decarbonize their power, to remove GHG emissions, and that has diverted supply chains across North America South. And so, whether it's transformers, or generators, or turbines, the lead times now are significant in terms of our ability to even acquire that technology. So, that's just some of the reality. None of that's meant to put in place any sort of a position on our ability to achieve the objective, simply the reality, which is that, you know, 2035 or a 12-year timeframe to achieve the objective, at least for Saskatchewan, will be very, very problematic. Next slide, please. So, you know, as this slide says, we need all options, and this slide shows what those available options currently are and those we could use going into the future. We plan to continue to expand hydro, as I noted earlier, some 360 megawatts that we'll continue to actively explore. Certainly, wind and solar. Under the equivalency agreement, we're required to build 2,000 megawatts of wind and solar by 2030, 3,000 by 2035. Electricity storage, we've just introduced our first battery energy storage system outside of Regina, or pardon me, inside of Regina on Fleet Street. Certainly, we're looking at biomass, and we have biomass operating at the Metal Lake region, and certainly geothermal is in development in this part of the province as well. So, as I've mentioned, we plan on expanding, you know, some of our renewables emission-free energy, but those are only available, as you'll know, intermittently. When the sun is shining and the wind is blowing, we call this intermittent power. So, we're excited about different emerging energy storage solutions. As I noted, we're building our first utility-scale battery. It's a 20-megawatt battery just right now in Regina on Fleet Street, and we'll soon contemplate expanding that to 80 megawatts. And what that will allow us to do is respond to the instantaneous demand for increases in load and better manage our power system. But more importantly, it'll give us experience in batteries and managing the integration of that 700 megawatts of renewables that's being deployed in south-central Saskatchewan between now and 2027. We also plan to import some additional emissions-free electricity from our neighbors, and we currently import about 350 megawatts from Manitoba. And these imports allow us to increase capacity, flexibility, and dependability of the grid. And you'll know that we're currently in the discussions around the construction of an international power line, and I appreciate it again. This will be an area of some discussion. I want to be clear that, you know, that power line is being built to ensure that not only the reliability of the power supply in Saskatchewan, but the stability of our system. As you integrate 3,000 megawatts of renewables on a 5,400-megawatt grid, you're at 8,400 megawatts of capacity, and you'll need a way to move that excess power whenever it's generating out of the province. But certainly, and this goes to the issue of, you know, of recent events over the course of the summer, we lost Poplar River 1 and 2 to, you know, a catastrophic event. A farmer's berm had breached, and our plant went down. We lost 580 megawatts of capacity in the province of Saskatchewan over the course of 70 days over the course of the summer. You know, big shout-out to all the SAS Power folks and all the, all the service, all the service groups that actually helped remediate and get that plant, those plants back up and running. But, but the point about raising Poplar River 1 and 2 is that we were, you know, very close to declaring energy emergencies, which would require energy management province-wide. And it was, you know, because of some of those large industrial customers taking down voluntarily some of their load requirement, and we were able to manage through that system. And certainly, then, an international power line is not only good for exporting excess capacity on wind and solar, but is also important for us to be able to import power when our power system encounters emergencies. And with only one real tie line, which is the tie line into Manitoba providing us the power, this is important in terms of, as I said, reliability and stability of the power system. And then we look at, when we look at SMRs, and I'll come back to SMRs if I may, so maybe next slide, Jeff. So, likely a good time to talk directly about how some of these future options fit in the Estevan region. This is, we are currently in the process of finalizing a RFP with a third-party, an independent power producer to build some 40 megawatts of solar plants, pardon me, 100-megawatt solar facility just in, outside of Estevan, and we'll know who that successful proponent is by 2024. This is on the heels of some 40 megawatts of solar plants that have already been built, some 20 megawatts just outside of Regina, and some, and some 10 just further north of Estevan here that have been deployed in the province. And as I said earlier, these are really the beginning of the commitment under the equivalency agreement to build that 2,000 megawatts between now and 2030. Okay, and maybe I'll just jump to the next slide around nuclear, if I could. Oh, and this is the Southwest Power Pool. I think I covered this, the interconnection and why we need this interconnection. Again, I'll take the opportunity to emphasize that again. This is not about trying to replace coal-fired generation with international coal-fired generation. That's not what will occur on this line. This is about maintaining system stability and reliability when we're increasing the size of our grid by some 40% between now and 2030. And we'll certainly have reliability benefits in terms of allowing us to transition from coal to next power. And, and maybe that's what the next slide is about with respect to nuclear power in the province. So, where are we at on our SMR development project? Well, I am grateful to the council and to you, Your Worship, for all of your support in terms of trying to understand as much as you can about what SMR deployment will look like in Saskatchewan, and certainly the impacts on your community. You know, while a final decision on SMRs isn't going to be made until 2029, we're actively engaged as a corporation in doing all the due diligence that's required to get us to that decision point. And that means spending over $140 million as a corporation to ensure that we have done all of the technical, environmental, and geotechnical studies that are going to support deployment of SMRs, and to allow government to make a fully informed decision on SMR deployment by 2029. In terms of where we're at, in practical terms, you'll know we announced two study regions in the province of Saskatchewan, the Elbow Study Region and the Estevan Study Region. We've been engaged in both public engagement and consultation, but also have triggered duty to consult as a corporation, and have started down that path to have a very informed discussion about where we're going. Certainly, all of that feedback will have to roll into an impact assessment process and ultimately be submitted to federal regulators, both the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission and the Impact Assessment Agency of Canada. We'll be, by the end of 2023, we hope we're in the position to be able to announce specific sites in both the Estevan and Elbow Study Regions. And then, by the end of 2024, we will be, we will be selecting a site that we would be building into our application to the Impact Assessment Agency of Canada to achieve both site construction and Impact Assessment Agency clearance to begin construction. Maybe I'll jump to timelines. So, we're a new, obviously, a new jurisdiction to nuclear generation. Currently, you'll know Cameco is one of the world's largest suppliers of uranium for power generation globally. It's been operating in Saskatchewan for many, many years, but certainly on the power generation front, this is new to us. And we're following, you know, all, again, as I said, we're conducting all our due diligence to ensure that we're complying with all the federal regulatory requirements by both CNSC and the Impact Assessment Agency. And that's going to require extensive public engagement and consultation. You'll know that that's been occurring, but it will still be ongoing as we look out into 2023, 24, and beyond. So, maybe I could ask you to just jump ahead again. I think I covered off most of the timeframe on that. So, what will the employment requirements look like if a decision is made to go ahead? So, I noted already that we're in the planning phase, so we've already, we're already on the, on the path to ramping up about 180 people province-wide, both, both inside the company, but also outside the company, independent engineering firms, environmental firms, et cetera, to do work on the pre-planning to get us to the decision. If the decision is actually made to go ahead with construction on an SMR in 2029, each SMR that we build, and I, you know, I'll come back to the question about the each, will be, you know, will require about 1,750 people to be involved in the construction throughout the construction period from 2029 to 2034. And I say each, and there's a practical and an economic reason for me to say this, which is no utility would just build one SMR, one of anything. From an operations perspective, that would be, you know, cost prohibitive. So, there's an economic argument to it. But certainly, from a power requirement perspective, 300 megawatts doesn't solve our problem, which is if we're removing 65% of our current generation, which is fossil fuel and emitting, 300 megawatts doesn't fill the hole. We'll need several potentially SMRs and/or carbon capture facilities on natural gas to fill that hole. And so, that's why I note that there's likely multiple SMRs that will be contemplated. And then, finally, in terms of operation of those SMRs, each, each unit, each 300-megawatt unit would have 100 people, 180 people approximately working at the, at the facility. These are preliminary numbers, clearly, as we become clearer around the design, the nuclear protection force requirements, et cetera, we'll have a more refined number. But these are based on preliminary numbers. That, that supports about three shifts at one, at one facility. And as I said, you know, the, you'll know that in the Estevan region, you know, we're looking at deployment of two, and certainly in the Elbow Region, up to four. So, each one of those units would be about 180 people, give or taken. Again, we'll come back to you, this council, with more detailed information as we get that as well. So, I think maybe the last slide is our last slide, oh, no, second last slide. So, I guess I'm here to tell you that we recognize that we need to listen and to engage and to hear your concerns, and certainly your concerns of your constituents with respect to our path forward. You know, we continue to actively investigate all the potential pathways for us as a corporation to achieve the objectives that, you know, I've discussed, whether those are 2050 or 2035. We're actively exploring all those pathways to, you know, for us as a company to get there as quickly as possible, while being able to deliver reliable, sustainable, and cost-effective power. And that is really, you know, fundamentally our mission as a company, and something that we're focused on every single day. You know, I think that there's lots of questions I think you might have about EVs and, you know, some of the other innovations that we're thinking about in the power system. But maybe I could take my time now to conclude, so we can have time for questions, Your Worship, and from you and council. So, again, I'd like to just thank you all for your leadership. Certainly, pleased to be here, and thank you for the invitation. We'd be pleased to take any questions you might have.
Okay, thank you, Rupen, and thank you for you and your team coming tonight. It means a lot to us, and our SBC employees are very much respected in our community. They're leaders in our community, and we couldn't do without them. They do a great job, as do the mining people in our community. So, thank you so much for that. And our surrounding indigenous groups, I know pheasant, rump, ocean man, and white bear, we're in discussions with them to support nuclear moving forward. So, I said I would mention tonight, and I know you guys, I'm sure, have already are going ahead with this, and that's dialogue with our indigenous, our close indigenous bands to bring them into the fold, so that they can see a future on the nuclear side as well, as far as employment, education. You know, you'll need that education, communication piece, and we've already talked to the local college about getting nuclear training in place sooner than later, so we can get our people trained, rather than having to import people from out east. So, thank you for that. I'll open the floor for questions or comments. Go ahead, Counselor Clark.
Thanks, Your Worship. Thanks for coming tonight. Certainly understand that the decision isn't made between Outlook or Elbow Area and us. I just want to be very clear that if we don't get the first ones, it, the disaster for this community is huge. I mean, we're talking about large numbers of people not having a job, and I think that people need to be a number-one priority on your decision, because it will absolutely destroy this community if we don't get it. So, you know, I'm almost begging you to say, "This is where it needs to go." And first, I hope we can get there. So, just wanted to make that comment. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Clark. Go ahead, Counselor Vroba.
Thank you, Worship. Thank you to all of you for coming tonight, because basically on Friday night, I did, with other members of council and management, attend the Tech Hub presentation regarding the SMRs. And it's good that we have that kind of information coming out, but also SAS Power has done some open houses here, too. And I do encourage you to continue with that, because nuclear is still in a lot of people's minds, an unsafe power solution, or power source. But what I, just from what it's been heard and informed of on Friday night, it made me feel a lot more secure with nuclear coming to our community. So, I encourage everybody to come out to any other open house at SAS Power or the Tech Hub has. And also, the Tech Hub has it. Hub has. And also, the Tech Hub has it actually on their website, their Facebook page, I believe. They've got the presentation up there, too, that people can click the link. So I encourage anyone to click on that link and watch it because it was very informative, and it made me feel very good about these S M Rs. And also, the fact that Ontario will probably kick them into production before we, so they'll work out all the kinks and then.
Right.
And again, I 100% echo what Counselor Clark said, that we are begging you to make Estevan the selection site.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Vroba. Counselor Ford.
Thanks, your worship, and thanks so much for coming tonight. Just to add to Counselor Clark, there's a group of people sitting right behind you tonight, and they're from the United Way here in Estevan. And without SAS Power, without SAS Power's family of employees, the United Way wouldn't be here in Estevan. We wouldn't be able to provide, you know, $300,000, $400,000 of social funding to places in our community. So I just really echo what Counselor Clark and Counselor Vroba says. Just take a really good look at the people in our community and and the employees in our community and see how big of hearts they have and to give back to the community so they can help the people that live here and just just take that into consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Ford. Also, the other half of that equation, God bless them, are the coal miners. So let's not forget about them either. Any other questions, Counselor?
Thank you, worship. Council's probably getting sick of hearing my save the bass speech, but here we go one more time. Nobody comes to town without hearing it. I do wish carbon capture was a little more a focus for SAS Power. That being said, I understand like why you're not going that way. So but I would do do like that to be more of a focus in the future. Boundary reservoir is home to a fish species called the largemouth bass. The largemouth bass are from Florida, and they thrive in this environment because of the the hot water, and they like the water steamed. So whether it's coal, gas, nuclear, there's only one way to steam water, and that's through power production. So I just want you to keep that in mind and also the people. So I have a little gift for you. Save the bass.
Oh, no, thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Cernick. Go ahead, Counselor Frank.
I don't know why I always have to follow up with his free gifts. I didn't bring you anything, unfortunately. So just wanted to take on to see Counselor Cernick's conversation and even just more specifically to the 2030-24 timeline that is obviously the biggest question mark, I think, for most people in the community. As we hear nuclear coming, we know that that's still a number of years away, hopefully coming. It's coming. We're gonna just hold you there. But knowing that there's that five-year gap of power production loss and what that looks like, and obviously, there's probably on our part and potentially even on your part, just a desire from the federal government to either a change in federal government or a change in mandate just to allow us to continue with coal and our carbon capture plants past that date. And in theory, in desire even longer would be great because we, of course, love the economic opportunities with our coal plant and with carbon capture, but we know there's a lot of other factors there. So do you have any kind of specific ideas of what the plan is for the 2030 to 2034 timeframe, or potentially longer, depending on when nuclear actually can be turned online? Or is it just really kind of relying on import and natural gas? Obviously, we'll see a big deficit there.
No, Counselor, thank you for the question, and I forgive you for not having a button to give us, too. But no, it's an important question. And, you know, so we are and we've been actively building out our natural gas fleet in the province. We built Chinook Power Station, Great Plains Power Station's under construction, Aspen Power Station is under, well, will be under construction and operational by 2027 outside of Lanigan. Certainly, and this won't be news in this council, I hope, but we've been actively looking at front-end engineering design studies to convert generators at Boundary, but certainly at the Shand Power Station to gas as well. So, you know, what can we do to bridge that gap between 2030 and likely 2034, 2035, 2036, if you're talking about two generators in the Estevan region? And so we're actively looking at all available options for us to bridge that gap. And, you know, and if you think about the useful life that's remains in the Shand generating facility, its end of life is 2042, I believe it is. You know, it would make good sense from our perspective as a utility not to take a write-down on a major asset because of federal regulation. So we're actively looking at all those options.
The queue, Counselor Frank. Any other questions or comments? I'll let Counselor Wallysir and then Counselor Clark.
Thank you, your worship. One of the questions I keep hearing is from that individual or family level. What should those small families be doing? Or is there anything that they should be doing? Or is it really up to the industrial power users to make some of those adjustments in their consumption to level the peaks and valleys? Who bears responsibility? And what can people do while they're waiting for these big federal-level decisions to be made?
Yeah, thanks for that question. It's a great question. So we'll be introducing some new programming on exactly this question, how to manage energy efficiency. I think if that's the question, how to manage energy efficiency going forward. It's something that we're hearing loud and clear as part of our engagement across the province as part of our power engagement conversations. You know, we're hearing more and more that people want to understand what they can do to play their part, and if that means energy management or efficiency measures, you know, what can that look like? And so we're we'll be releasing some programming on that front in the coming months. And so maybe, I guess I would say, you know, in the meantime, we try to send out, you know, public service announcements about how to manage load, especially during heat waves or during extreme cold periods. We tell people to, you know, check the water temperature in their water heaters, make sure that they're turning out their lights and managing power. But we'll come back with a more coordinated program on that front in the coming months. But thank you for the question.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Wallysir. Counselor Clark?
Yeah, just thank your worship. Just on this impact assessment at 2029, is that date a long time because the other decision isn't going to be made till later? Or is that holding up the process? Like, it seems like that shouldn't take five or six years to do an impact assessment, but is that just how it is?
Yeah. So I there's a number of answers to that question, Counselor. So it is, in fact, what the process is. And so we're working with the Impact Assessment Agency to see what we can do to streamline that process, what we can do to shave time off so that we can get a more timely decision in front of decision-makers here in the province. But what I would tell you is that the Canadian nuclear industry is one of the most well-managed and regulated nuclear industries in the world, kind of a beacon, if you will, to all the other, you know, nuclear producers around the planet. And the Canadian Nuclear Safety Commission has, in fact, its own process for ensuring that any new nuclear facility has in place the appropriate safety protocols, has in place the appropriate training regime, has in place, you know, all the safeguards to ensure safe and reliable operation of nuclear facilities. And so right now, the federal government has told us that the impact assessment process and the Canadian nuclear safety process are going to kind of work hand in glove, so there's not a duplicative process. But we still have a desire to see what we can do to shave some time off the process without compromising any of the safety because that is paramount to us as a utility. And so we actively are working on that question right now.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Clark. Seeing no more questions or comments, again, we'd like to thank you, Ruupan, you and your team. Estevan has been a large part, over 50 years in the power production in this province, and we look forward to being a large part of power production moving forward with your help, with your team's help, and the province's help as well. So thank you so much for coming down tonight. Appreciate all of you taking time away from your family to be here. Thank you, and have a safe trip back.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, you could stay for the meeting, but for some strange reason, very few people do.
I've got save the bass button.
Maybe, yeah, okay, yeah, you gotta go save the bass. I get that. Exactly. Okay, thank you for that.
Thank you, and happy birthday again.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving forward, could we have a motion, please, to adopt the agenda as presented? Thank you, Counselor Wallysir, seconded by Counselor Frank. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, could we have a motion, please, to accept the minutes of the council meeting held on September 11th of 23? Counselor Ford, thank you, seconded by Counselor Clark. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have from the Maite Nation of Saskatchewan, of Estevan, Saskatchewan, local number 25, the donation request. Now, we've done this in the past. I understand, Counselor Ford, this will be at the Suris Valley Museum. I know last year, I think we donated 500 as well. That's for bannock and soup. And we had a really good turnout last year, and we're hoping for the same this year as well. So what's the wish of council? Could we have a motion to that effect? Counselor Ford?
Thanks, your worship. I think this is a great partnership with Maite Nation and the Suris Valley Museum, and I'll make the motion to accept making a donation of $500 again this year.
Okay, thank you for that. And that will be coming up. Is a date on here?
It'll be on Friday from 11 to 2.
29?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for that. Have we got a second there? Okay, Counselor Vroba, ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have from the U M W A, the United Mine Workers of America, sponsorship for pathway benches, exclusive rights. Now, I'll read this out, and I think it might be tough for us to give exclusive rights. I know as many as we can give, they can have. But usually, what we do is on a first-come, first-served basis. And we've had a great relationship with the mine workers at Affinity Place, throughout our parks, and it's worked out very well. The United Mine Workers of America would like to purchase 10 benches with garbage garbage cans to go along with the 12 that were already purchased for the walking path in Estevan. The U M W A has been told by the manager of the Parks Department, that is the amount required to complete the walking path. By doing this, the U M W A would like the exclusive rights to the pathway, of course excluding the benches that are already on place, in place on the pathway. The United Mine Workers thanks the city council for their consideration. Now, I understand if there's 10 left and they take the 10, I guess that's great. They'll have most of the benches, but I don't think it's needed that we give exclusivity to that. We'll give them the 10 if council wishes, because once we start giving exclusivity, that may cause issues for other groups down the road. That's just my suggestion. So what's the wish of council? Counselor Vroba?
Thank you, worship. I'm in favor of the 10. I think the support of the United Mine Workers of America have been great. And I think that basically by saying the 10 more is what we need, they've completed all the benches we are going to have. I don't think it's a bad thing to give them the first right of refusal if we find a need for another bench, to go to them first. And then if they decline, then we can go on to someone else.
Well, again, it's up to council. I would rather first-come, first-served. This will give them the bulk of the benches on the pathway. They will be fully recognized. I think once we start giving the right of first refusal to one group, then other groups will want it. Also, if we give it exclusivity to one group, then other groups will want it. So I think you'll end up having an issue.
Yeah.
But I totally agree with giving them the 10 that they want for now.
I just see it as a good problem. If we have more groups coming forward saying, hey, I want the baseball fields first right, we want to pay for everything. That's how I kind of see them saying. I see them saying, we're interested in paying for your benches and for your garbage cans. And, you know, I walk the pathways, and I see all the benches, and I see that most of them are in memory of or in honor of. And I think it's a great community support and recognition. And I just, I personally, just my opinion, I don't see the problem with giving them first right, which would be basically exclusive rights, until they decline us. And the moment they decline, then we go to first right of refusal or just someone else.
But Counselor Vroba, they're not asking for first right of refusal. They're asking for exclusive rights on the pathway.
Right. But I just think then we have to have an agreement with them that states, in the event that we need a bench put somewhere and they don't want to pay for it, then we are we are able to go on our own and have that bench put in.
But we can do that now, even if we give them the 10 benches.
Yeah.
If there's another bench needed, whoever comes forward can have it.
Yeah, I think you and I are just on a different page right now.
Okay, go ahead, Counselor Clark.
Thank you. I'm going to, thanks, your worship, but I'm going to support Counselor Vroba. I think what they're saying is we want to supply those 10 benches. If they need more, they still have to go back to their membership to see if it's if it's there. So along the pathway, they would be who we would go and ask. And if they refuse, then we move on to somebody else. I think if somebody else wants to put something into our community, I think I think we can find someplace to recognize them. You know, this is only along the pathway. I think we have several parks that are in need of that. It's probably not a good time to refuse free money in this community. I think it might be seen as a little counterproductive. Thank you.
Yeah, I think we have a misunderstanding here. Number one, I have no issue with giving them the 10 benches that they're requesting. What I'm suggesting is to give them exclusive, they don't need exclusive. By giving them the 10 benches, they've got the bulk of the benches, not all of them, because we're not going to remove benches that are already there. So that will already, by giving them what they want, the 10 benches, they will already have the bulk of the benches on the pathway. I don't think that makes us having to go to them and say, moving forward on another pathway or in another area, we ask the mine workers first. I don't think that is what they're asking. I think we have a misconception here. Right now, what I see they're asking is 10 benches. Go ahead, Counselor Wallysir.
Thank you, your worship. Perhaps the right decision at this time, then, would be to table the discussion until someone can speak on behalf of the United Mine Workers of America directly.
Sure, we can have, if you like, we can have Mel come to the next meeting, and he can fully explain it. Counselor Ford?
Thanks, your worship. I have a little bit of a problem with giving the United Mine Workers exclusive rights because some part of our sponsorship package was not specific for organizations. So if some individual were to come up to us with an individual request saying, we would like to commemorate a family member of ours. They walked on this specific pathway. Can we please put a bench? And we find the room for that bench along our pathway. By giving them that access to exclusive rights, we no longer we no longer allowed individuals in our community to commemorate their family members. So that's kind of where I run into a problem with that. So unfortunately, I don't agree with you, Counselor Vroba, but I would be very happy to have them come to a council meeting and discuss it.
Exactly. I think that would help clarify a lot. Counselor Frank?
Thanks, your worship. Yeah, and I can see both sides of this. I was actually leaning more towards being okay with giving them kind of more exclusive rights because I see what they're trying to get at is they really want to be a firm statement that we are here to commit to this community for future pathways and for everything, which we greatly appreciate. So I would support Counselor Wallysir's suggestion if we can get them get some of the U M W A people in, and we can have a great conversation about how we can. I think I think the right solution here is partnership, you know, and what that looks like, we can hash out. But I appreciate that they clearly are making a firm statement of we want to be your partner for a long term, and I think we want to accept that partnership, what the fine terms are. We can we can hash out the conversation, but.
Yeah, and we've had a good partnership up to this time. We have.
And I think it's fantastic. And we, I mean, we just we just had a 40-minute presentation where I think we all made it quite clear to SAS Power that our mine workers are incredibly important to us. So we'll continue to have that relationship. So, yeah, I would, I don't know if Counselor Wallysir actually made a motion, if anybody's made a motion.
Okay, Counselor Wallysir, would you make a motion? Then we table this till the next meeting, at which point we'll have Mel here to explain their position.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for that. Counselor Frank, you'll second that. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carried. Thank you. Oh, you're against, Counselor? Okay, let it be noted. Counselor Clark is against that motion. Thank you, Counselor Clark. Okay, next, under original communications, delegations, and petitions, we have from St. Joe's Hospital, request relief of Festival of Trees rental reduction. Now, in the past, we have been given the foundation the price that they're asking today. So what's the wish of council? So what's the wish of council? We're planning our 11th annual Festival of Trees. Affinity Place is beautiful, brings a level of class and elegance to an event that no other facility within Estevan can. And we would love to continue to hold our biggest fundraiser there. It has become highly anticipated and continuously proves to be hugely successful, night of money raised in support of our hospital. So of course, keeping our costs as low as possible helps immensely. The St. Joseph's Hospital Foundation, like so many other charities in Estevan, raise funds to ensure that our community is strong and viable. We realize that it is very costly to run an event, and there are many things to consider. However, as a charity organization trying to raise money, we would once again ask to pay the discounted rate of $3,750 for the attached rental quote provided by Erin Wilson. We would also like to ask to have use of the new fantastic score clock in its entirety for us to play video on the evening of Saturday, November 18th, at the gala. Thank you so much for your time and consideration. Laurie Jarvey, Executive Director, St. Joseph's Hospital Foundation. Councillor Frank?
Thanks, Your Worship. Yes, I know this is something we used to do on a multi-year agreement, and I believe last year is the first year we just decided to go to year by year, just to make sure that we were dealing with the needs of, the very changing needs of hockey constantly and things like that. But I don't believe that there's any reason to have any issue with that this year, so I would support this recommendation, doing the same discount we've given years past.
Okay. Thank you, Councillor Frank. You'll make that motion that we accept, okay? Have we got a second there? Okay, Councillor Ford, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, okay, thank you. Next, St. Joseph's Hospital, table for Festival of Trees. What's the wish of council? Usually, we do get a table. What's the wish of council this year? Councillor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. It's usually our intent in getting a table to support that organization by us also being there and being a presence and spending our money there. So I would request that city buy a table for that, and whoever can attend, go.
Okay, thank you. Have we got a second there? Councillor Clark? Okay, any further discussion? Saying none? Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations and petitions. We have the GFL Cart Report for August of 23. Any questions or comments on that? Saying none? Could we have a motion, please, to accept the Cart Report for August? Thank you, Councillor Verova, seconded by Councillor Wallysir. Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Next, under original communications, delegations and petitions. We have Canada's newest national museum request for support to be recognized federally. Now, this is coming from the Mayor of Regina. The RCMP Heritage Centre has been commemorating and celebrating Canadian history since 2007. As a national museum, it will grow to be a site to explore our shared humanity. There are many proud and inspiring chapters of the RCMP's 150-year history, but others that are painful. The National RCMP Museum will tell the important stories of duty, commitment, of beginnings and evolution. Complex and difficult truths will also be told through stories and accounts about the legacy and realities of residential schools, missing and murdered Indigenous women, girls and Two-Spirit people. The museum will be a place for visitors to reflect and learn about Canada's history and its future from different perspectives. These uniquely Canadian stories not only deserve to be told, they must be told, inspiring difficult and everything in between. So with that, Canadians want to see a national RCMP museum that is reflective of our history and voices. In 2022, a Canada-wide engagement was completed. The results were overwhelmingly positive. 89% of survey respondents say it's important for Canadians to have access to a national museum that honors the courageous contributions of the RCMP while telling these difficult stories. 90% of the respondents agreed the museum should pay tribute to the extraordinary dedication, duty and service of generations of Canadian Mounties and civilian employees, past and present. The majority of survey respondents also agreed the museum should reflect a broad and diverse set of perspectives. 84%. And support efforts aimed at reconciliation between the RCMP and Canada's Indigenous Peoples, 76%. So what is museums overall contribute 2.9 billion to Canada's economy? So what is the wish of council this evening on this point? Councillor Frank?
Thanks, Your Worship, for clarification. This is, the Mayor of Regina had requested that we would join in support.
In this quest?
No, I absolutely would stand behind our friends in Regina, and the RCMP Heritage Centre is great. It currently has one of our former museum employees working there, which is wonderful. And I may have even got married there, so I definitely have, it has a soft spot in my heart. So I would make the recommendation that we support her.
You'll make that motion? Okay, thank you. And yeah, that area for weddings is fantastic. Boy, have we got a second there, Councillor Verova?
Thank you, Worship. Yes, I'll second the motion, but also, there was even talk, and I'm not sure if there's still talk, about taking away the Depot Training Center in Regina. And I just think by having this and the Depot and everything, it's very important for Regina to continue to have the RCMP heritage there. So I think it's important that the city of Estevan support this motion.
Okay, thank you for that, Councillor Verova. And yeah, that came out of, it was a comment that came out of that inquiry down east, which was horrific. It was a complete mess, what happened down there. But again, I don't think it's fair to paint all of the RCMP for some of the mistakes that happened over a 24-hour period. Again, that was unbelievable, but you can't paint everyone with the same brush. So thank you for that. Any other comments? Go ahead, Councillor Wallysir.
This also presents a unique opportunity, not just for the RCMP in our province, but also provincially for those local police forces. They are working on curriculum development as well, to really make sure that each person that's part of the policing of our community has a cultural and Indigenous awareness. So I'm also in favor of supporting this.
Okay, thank you for that, Councillor Wallysir. Saying no other comments? Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Tonight, under written reports of committees, we have none. Executive reports, we have the Water Quality Report of August. Could we have a motion, please, to accept the Water Quality Report of August? Thank you, Councillor Clark, seconded by Councillor Sernick. Thank you, Councillor Sernick. Any further questions, comments? Saying none? Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you. Introduction of bylaws, we have none this evening. Public hearings and reports. We have our friends from the United Way for the United Way Proclamation. Thank you so much for being so patient and staying with us throughout the evening. It speaks to your character and your support to the community. God bless you, everyone. Who's going to speak tonight? Robert?
Thank you.
You can take turns.
We'll take turns. We'll go back and forth.
Okay.
My name's Robert Godfrey. I'm the past president of United Way Estevan.
And I'm Michelle Bolio. I'm the current president for this year of the United Way.
Awesome. Yeah, so we're very excited to be gearing up for this year's edition of the telethon. It is a very busy time for our board, but it's a very exciting time. This year, we are hoping to raise $343,000 and, oh, 64, I forgot the 64. $343,064 we are planning to raise for our member agencies and community impact partners. And so we wanted to come to council this year to ask that we have a proclamation to recognize United Way Estevan Week leading up to our annual telethon. And yeah, we're really looking forward to it. Another thing that we do want to mention is, as we plan, we want to welcome the community to take part in this year's telethon, whether that be through volunteering, performing or donating. We'd love to have you a part of this year's telethon. If you have any questions or you'd like to sign up for anything, you can contact our Executive Director, Heidi Hesselink. You can call the United Way Estevan office at 634-7375.
Okay, thank you, Robert. And that's why a man, okay, that's why a man always has to have a woman close by to straighten things out, because invariably, we screw things up. So thank you.
She keeps me in order at all times.
Yeah, thank you for bringing Michelle. And Michelle, what would you like to say?
No, I think you covered it. It was so good.
We're a team. We planned this beforehand, so she gives the input before crosses out all the mistakes and then I just make less mistakes.
Awesome. Okay, well, thank you both. You're both a team. Thank you for that. Will, I guess I'll ask at this point for a motion from council, and then we'll read the proclamation, and all should be good. Do we have a motion from council? Okay, thank you. Councillor Frank, seconded by. Councillor Ford, ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, okay. Now, United Way Estevan Telethon. Whereas, United Way Estevan's mission is that everyone in our community has the opportunity to reach their full potential. And whereas, Estevan Way, or United Way Estevan's telethon raises funds for local agencies and community impact projects, all in our community, to improve lives. We've got some spaces on this, sorry about that. Be it therefore resolved, I Roy Leibert, Mayor of the City of Estevan and the Province of Saskatchewan, do hereby proclaim the week of October 8th to October 15th, 2023, as United Way Estevan Telethon Week, and urge all citizens of Estevan to recognize and support the goals and objectives of the United Way of Estevan. And again, thank you so much for helping and contributing, and I know we have council members as well on the board, but as a community, we couldn't do it without the volunteers that we have within our community to do the job, the heavy lifting in the background. So we can't thank you all enough. Thank you. And again, you're all welcome to stay for the meeting.
Anything you want to make sure?
Oh, okay.
Proclamation photo.
Okay.
We're almost done.
Okay. You want that now, or? Yeah, I think they want to leave. I totally understand. We don't want to have to put up with that sleepy guy at the front anymore.
David, do you want me to take the photo so you can get in with your red shirt? You're never in the photo game.
Yeah, but that's by design. I prefer my view on my side.
Are we going to get it under our logo?
Sure.
Would that be appropriate?
Yep.
Give me a button on my shirt on.
This is the first one, so it's kind of a learning experience.
Come on, back on. Come on. Get one in. I'm not wearing my shirt.
We're going to need a couple rows then, just get people standing in the center.
Larry, come in. Beth, Larry, come behind us.
Larry, will we have?
Where are we going here?
Okay, we're going to get basic, tight, narrow, gathered. Can we actually just get maybe Roy and hand you the swish, please?
Go.
Just switch.
Oh, yeah.
And then everybody get squished.
No, no, squishy.
Anyway, this is absolutely.
Everybody looking at this one? The floor looking at these?
Blanked.
I'm sure somebody have blaked each one of these. Everybody looking at these? Can we actually get the front row just to shuffle?
Can everybody shuffle to the left?
No, no, just hold. Just so we can get everyone to kind of center there.
We're really, really over here. You might be right.
Sorry. The front row went a little too far. She went a little bit, some of her center.
We're back.
We're getting back now.
Yeah, we do.
Use your buzz coffee.
Councillor Ford, last ones.
Is this why we say thanks to Linskap?
No, this is why you say we're live.
Thanks, David. Appreciate it.
And then there was two.
But we're whittling the entire.
We have nothing this evening on that item. Motions from committee, we have none. Consideration of bylaws, we have none. Inquiries, Councillor Verova?
Thank you, Worship. I actually had to phone Bylaw and talk to her about a few unsightly properties. One was an apartment building, and one was behind, in between the alley with Fourth and Fifth Street. There's box spring and mattresses, and I know there's a charge when you go out to the landfill for these, but it's important that they don't just get left around. It's unsightly, rodents, et cetera. Like, there's just multiple, multiple reasons why these things need to be picked up in a timely fashion. So I did work with Bylaw on these two properties. I don't believe right now that, as of yet, they're picked up. Hopefully soon. But there was a few other ones, too, that are unsightly, and some of them are repeat from year to year to year. And we keep talking about this, but I truly believe we need to use our winter months to tighten up our bylaw so that we can just act on these properties next year. I don't think it's right when you have people that live beside you that are not taking care of their property even remotely. And there's a few that are just above and beyond what a normal just, you know, notice of a little high grass would be. There's one on Duncan that has weeds and things coming out of the vents. The window's been open, I believe it's even from an estate. And it just, that's a situation where I don't believe the neighbors should have been forced to live beside it all year long without the city stepping in. And I've talked to other people in other cities, and it's like, nope, city steps in, city does the property, and it goes on their taxes. We have that bylaw behind us, too, and I think we need to act on it. And I just think for next year, it's too late this year. We've missed our window of opportunity, but next year, we definitely need to make sure that these properties are taken care of. And I know it's a system where you have to give them notice, let them have a chance to do it, but either we need to tighten up that window, or we need to find a way to act on it quicker.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Verova. And yeah, the repeat offenders, we should get to them sooner in the year. If we have to put more teeth in it, let's do so, because it's, you know, it's frustrating for the neighbors, for them to have to complain year after year after year, and it doesn't seem to get any better. Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Clark?
Nothing tonight, Your Worship.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Wallysir?
Thank you, Your Worship. Just a reminder to the community that the Churchill Park Play Structure Open House is tomorrow night. It's going to be in the Affinity Forecourt, so as people are coming and going from their regular evening activities, pop in, say hi, we're going to have staff there, I'll be there. We're really looking to make sure that these new play parks are ridiculously expensive. And that's what I keep hearing from the community is, why are we spending so much on play parks when they're not what we want anyways? So it's a really good opportunity for people to come out and see, here's the safety, here's the structure, here's the thought behind it, and get that chance to say, this is what that Churchill area needs in our community.
Thank you, Councillor Wallysir. And I know you've had lots of input with your young family, much appreciated. So hopefully, we can get a turnout, get good feedback, and that'll be from 5:30 to 7:30? Okay? Please come out. You really shouldn't complain if you don't come out and take part. So thank you for that. Councillor Ford?
Thanks, Your Worship. September 30th, this Saturday, is National Day for Truth and Reconciliation. This day coincides with Orange Shirt Day, which began in 2013, as a symbol of This day coincides with Orange Shirt Day, which began in 2013 as a symbol of remembrance to honor Indigenous children that were forced to leave their families to attend residential schools. This day provides a way for our nation and community to publicly recognize the history and repercussions of residential schools and the resilience of residential school survivors, as this kind of commemoration is a vital aspect of the reconciliation process. Please take some time this week to familiarize yourself with the events going on in the community to recognize this day. As we already discussed, on September 29th, which is Friday, from 11:00 to 2:00, Métis Nation is partnering with the Suresh Valley Museum to host a lunch. This month through November 10th, there's an art gallery exhibit called reconcili- reconcilionialism. I've practiced that all day, and I still couldn't say it. And then on September 30th at 2:00 p.m., St. Paul's United Church will be hosting a Kyris blanket exercise. So if you find time in your schedule, please make sure you take in some of these events, and if not, please just make sure you're, you know, keeping up with the research, keeping up with Indigenous affairs and what's happening in our community, in our province, in our nation, because this is still an ongoing effort to provide reconciliation efforts and to just, you know, remember the history of all these horrific events. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Ford, Counselor Sernick?
Thank you, worship. I just had a couple inquiries in the past, and then a new, fresh one this weekend into the, you know, access for Affinity Place for wheelchairs, stuff like that, so I would like to support anything coming up in the future, or we could, you know, improve the access doors, automated doors for Affinity Place.
Okay, good point, thank you. Councilor, city manager, do you want to?
Thank you, worship, too, Counselor Sernick. We actually do have quotes to take for budget. We did some research on that earlier this year, so hopefully we can get something passed in budget and move into that next year.
Okay, thank you, city manager, for being proactive on that. Counselor Frank?
Nothing this evening, your worship, aside from happy birthday to you, all of us in Estevan.
God bless your little heart.
Appreciate your many years of wisdom as our mayor.
Thank you, thank you, Counselor.
And even those who don't appreciate it.
There's some that don't appreciate, come on, that can't be.
Just one or two, just one or two.
Okay, thank you for that. City manager?
Nothing.
City treasurer?
Nothing, your worship.
City clerk?
Nothing tonight, your worship.
Okay, thank you all. I guess I was just going to read, and Counselor Ford covered it, but as part of our relationship with the Indigenous community, St. Giles Anglican Church is hosting a blanket exercise, Caro's Blanket Exercise, exploring the nation-to-nation relationship between Indigenous and non-Indigenous peoples in Canada. Everyone is welcome and encouraged to attend this community-wide event Saturday, September 30th, 2:00 p.m. at St. Paul's United Church. And if you want more information, you can call 306-897-0402. So that is great, that ends the evening. Do we have a motion to move into committee, please? Counselor Clark? Thank you. Seconded by Counselor Sernick. Any questions, comments? Saying none? Ready for the question? All in favor? Carrie, thank you so much. Good evening, everyone, and good night.